And under chairman's report, we're going to report on the five-year financial projections next week. That will include both a discussion of the priorities, the assumptions, and the projections themselves, and we'll be voting on that next week. I'm adding a report from Vice Chair Zulus on the town school consolidation recommendations. And actually, there are two sets of recommendations, so we'll be reporting out on that at this meeting and then again next week. And I have no other changes. So moving to citizen speak, we have...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Under cash management policy, we won't be voting that tonight, is that correct?
Yes, I don't... Okay. So no vote tonight, okay? Thank you. Mr. Ask?
Where do I sit?
You sit right at the microphone there.
Okay, thank you.
If you would, give your name and address, and as you know, the citizen speak format is you have a maximum of 15 minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
So my name is Eric Ask. I'm at 10 Starter Lane. I'm a Pierce parent. I have two daughters at Pierce, and they both went to Glover over the last seven, eight years. Okay, the reason I'm here tonight is to basically bring your attention to an $875,000 project funded through the Safe Roots to School Program to improve safety at the corner of Brook Road and Canton Avenue. And this is for the crossing of the Glover families. Glover families who choose to walk and bicycle to school. And it also encourages others to walk and bike once they're assured of their safety in doing so. The work on the sidewalks and the crosswalk will be ADA compliance. It's the city's federal money, and all Milton residents who walk and bike in this area would also benefit. So I'm just here to give you a little background and then ask for your support for this project. Okay, I have copies of this that I can leave perhaps. So that you have all the websites. Great, that'd be great. So four minutes of basic background, please. All right. Why does the Safe Roots to School Program exist? It exists to encourage children to walk and bike to school. There's many benefits of this. Obviously, the health benefits. There's learning benefits. The kids get a little exercise prior to showing up at school. There's safety benefits. There's less traffic around... Okay, less traffic around the school at that time, it's better for the environment with, again, less traffic, and better for the community with more people out and about. Okay. Safe Roots to School works primarily by pursuing what we call the five Es. That's education, you know, educating people about the benefits, and bicycle safety and pedestrian safety. Encouragement, you know, we have these programs, Walk to School Days, to get people to participate. Enforcement, working with law enforcement to assure speed limits are respected and law, you know, traffic laws are respected around the schools. Evaluation, which is, you know, keeping record maybe twice a year of how many people do walk and bike to school, and what are the trends, and what can be done to improve those numbers. And finally, engineering, which is why I'm here tonight. All right? That's making sure there's sidewalks, crosswalks, school zone lights, that sort of thing. Okay. The basic history of the program, it was started in Denmark in the 1970s because they were concerned about children being injured, hitting, being hit by cars on their way to school. Subsequently, it expanded in Europe. It moved to Canada, Australia, New Zealand, and the United States. The first program in the United States was in 1997 in the Bronx. In 98, the US government funded two pilot programs, one in Los Angeles, one in Arlington, Massachusetts. And in the fall of 2003, Walk Boston was able to get funds from the Massachusetts Highway Department for a pilot Safe Roots to School Program for eight schools in Massachusetts, two of which were in Milton. One was Pierce, one was Glover. Okay, so we were 25% of the initial pilot project. In July of 2005, the US Congress passed legislation funding Safe Roots to School, and this was administered by every state. Federal money going to states. That was $612 million from 2005 to 2009, and the project money we're talking about tonight was from that time. So that's how long, I've been at this a long time. So in 2006, my oldest daughter, who's now an eighth grader at Pierce, started kindergarten at Glover. And this is something, this walking and biking to school is something, I'm a marine biologist for a multinational chemical company. When I was in fifth grade, I was a lieutenant patrol at my elementary in Seattle, crossing kids at school. At sixth grade, I became the captain. So it's been a passion of mine for quite a while. So when I came, like, my daughter started Glover, I was very interested in restarting this Safe Roots to School Program. Did so. Dr. Corson, the principal at the time, was very supportive of it, and we got enrolled in the program, and that, since we were one of the first schools to do so, we got the engineering audit. So the contractors for Mast dot Safe Roots to School Program came out, did the engineering audit, and I've been following that money ever since. Okay? That has been a long, strange journey. What have we done in those years? Okay, all four elementary schools are now participating in Safe Roots to School Program. They're registered, and Pierce as well. We started pedestrian safety training for second graders, and the physical education teachers in the elementary were trained by Walk Boston, another contractor for the Safe Roots to School Program. The fourth graders received bicycle safety training as part of their PE curriculum, something, and again, they were trained in that by Mast Bike, the other contractor. And, oh boy, there was a meeting out in Worcester in the winter of 2010, 11, where I was able to arrange that the governor would walk the kids to school at Glover in the, in May of 2011. And that, besides the governor, who was kind enough to do that, you know, we had Senator Joyce, as well as the, at that time, the secretary of, secretary and CEO of Mast dot, Mr. Jeffrey Mullen. Okay? So all this time, I've been asking, where's our engineering project? You know, just constantly following up with our DPW with Mast dot. Well, it's here. So on October 23rd, there was a meeting at Glover on this project, and again, I have the website you can go to and look at the drawings if you're not familiar. But the main thing, unfortunately, I was unable to attend the meeting because I had a business meeting in Boston, and what concerns me is that we're just not getting enough information out there to, not just the parents who would enjoy it, but parents who, you know, will enjoy it in decades to come. Because we have to remember, when you change these intersections, this will be something, you know, that'll go and be enjoyed for decades to come. So all I want to say is, you know, this is kind of small here, sorry for that. I'd like to be up there, but that's all right. There's a lot of traffic going on, and I encourage all of you to take the time at, be at Glover at 8:35 in the morning and witness this. Okay? Please do that sometime in January. It's amazing. It's a very long crosswalk, and there's no curbs to keep cars off, there's people parking on sidewalks, so the kids can't even walk on the sidewalk. It's amazing. And, you know, the traffic engineers did come up with a plan, and there was a meeting October 23rd. Butters were invited and informed, and that was great, and, you know, they expressed their concerns, and that's fine, that's democracy. It's just really important that as the school committee, who's, you know, I know one of your major concerns is child safety, that you're aware, we have $875,000 out there, and people have to get involved for this project. Okay? I mean, my kids are, my oldest now will be in high school, be here next year. And, you know, it's just been a long journey, and it'd be nice to end this journey. Okay, so it's a big intersection, I put in ten, five tennis courts, all right? It's not a very pleasant place. I run there every day, I do some cycling through there. And I would just say finally, going forward, all right, Mast dot will have a follow-up meeting in this first quarter, not scheduled yet, but no doubt it'll be at Glover, and everyone will be informed. I'll make sure. I'm just, again, I'm requesting that you please be involved and be informed of this That, you know, there's proven benefits to walking and biking to school, and this project not, doesn't just benefit Glover parents now and in the future, but also Milton residents who enjoy getting over to Turner's Pond and who are out bicycling and running on Brook Road. And again, please try to visit the school at, you know, 8:35 in the morning and 3:10 in the afternoon to see the traffic with your own eyes. And I would also ask that, you know, in the spring, probably, usually it's the first week of May is Mass Walk, Massachusetts Walk and Bike to School Day, and so please work with the superintendent to get yourselves invited to these schools to participate in a walking group, you know, just to show support for this Safe Roots to School Program. It's an excellent program, great benefits to the whole community, decreased traffic, healthy kids. It's a great program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Was that 15 minutes?
That was 10 minutes, so you're three minutes.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that we have those perseverance. I know I'm not supposed to respond directly, but I think we should definitely, we should be congratulated for your perseverance, and I'm staying with this, so thank you.
If it can be done before my daughter graduates high school, I'll be really a happy man. Thank you.
Moving on to the superintendent's report, we have Assistant Superintendent Janet Sheen filling in for Superintendent Gormly. Ms. Sheen?
Thank you. So we have a list of happenings in the, in the coming weeks, January. The first meeting of the Transportation and Traffic Safety Subcommittee will be held tomorrow morning in the superintendent's conference room at 8:30 a.m. We have our CPAC Parent Workshop on assistive technology that will take place on Tuesday, January 13th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the Pierce Middle School Library. We would like the public to know that our next school committee meeting, which is scheduled for next Wednesday, January 14th, will begin with an open budget hearing, and the public is invited to attend and sign up to speak and comment on, on the budget. And that meeting will be followed by a regular school committee meeting, and during that meeting, we will be hearing from the Collicott School Site Council. There is also going to be a, a presentation by NBA basketball player Chris Heron at the Milton High School Auditorium on January 15th at 7:00 p.m., and he's going to talk about his experiences with substance abuse and recovery. We have planned for, let's see, actually, Monday, January 19th is Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and there is no school on that day. Students across the district are currently preparing for an event that will take place that evening. They are creating poems and essays and drawings. Some are preparing for musical performances, and this is for the annual memorial celebration, which is sponsored by the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association. The keynote speaker that evening will be Chief Richard Wells from the Milton Police Department, and we, the public is invited to this event. And again, our students are very busy preparing for this. This is an annual effort on their part, and they are always very, very proud to share all of their work. We would like to announce our Kindergarten Parent Information Night. It's going to be held in the Milton High School Auditorium on January 20th at 7:00 p.m. We will be presenting information about the kindergarten registration and screening process. Parents in advance will also receive a link to our video that is, that is entitled "So You're Going to Kindergarten." We also plan to show it that evening. And then finally, we have our Pierce Players who are presenting Oklahoma on Thursday and Friday, January 22nd and 23rd at 7:00 p.m., and they will be presenting again on Saturday, January 24th at 2:00 p.m. And if possible, we are going to see if we can have a preview at our next school committee meeting, if we're able to work that around the open budget hearing. And do we have anything to add from our student representatives?
Mr. McCarthy?
I have one thing. This Friday, the Best Buddies will be holding their second sports night. This night will be the boys' basketball game. The entire club, along with Walpole High School's entire Best Buddies Club, will be attending the game, leading their teams out onto the court and sending out honorary captains. And also, this will be Milton High School's entrance into the Battle of the Fans competition. So this competition is, you create a video of one game, and you organize cheers, you organize virtually just a fan section, you send it into the MIAA, and you create a video for it, and the winning school, I forget what the prizes are exactly, but I believe it's a banner and HEAP t-shirts, like class t-shirts, some sort, from the MIA, so we're hoping we can get a really big attendance to this. So this will be our Best Buddies Night mixed with the Battle of the Fans competition.
What's the date again?
What time?
Oh, the game will start at 6:30.
What's the date again?
This Friday.
And is that the...
Yep, Copeland Fieldhouse.
So Dr. Pavlichek was in touch with our bus company today and requested that the buses pick up any students they see walking tomorrow. Some of the districts locally are, are planning to do that, given the expected weather tomorrow morning, it will be quite cold, so we're pleased to, to report that if they do see any students walking, they have been directed to pick them up.
Ms. Sheridan?
Would it also be possible to assure, you know, or just get some reassurance of what exactly they're doing to make sure that the buses can start? You know, because in this really cold weather, oftentimes, you know, buses or cars will fail, and we don't want kids waiting out for long periods of time on, on corners waiting for, for buses to arrive.
It is certainly a worry. I spoke to the bus company this afternoon, they're bringing in all their staff early, extra early tomorrow morning to try to get all the buses going. You know, diesel fuel is not particularly friendly with subzero temperatures, so there will probably be a certain number of buses across, you know, the various districts around here that won't start. But the first student has said they're bringing their staff in extra early tomorrow to try to get everything up and underway with the expected cold.
And I understand that some districts are actually having tow trucks there ready to jumpstart buses that might not be able to start on their own, so it's good that all those proactive measures are being taken to keep our kids safe and warm. Thank you.
Actually, we have the Milton High School Site Council. Mr. Zulus?
Just want to follow up very quickly on what Janet mentioned on the first meeting in the Transportation and Traffic Safety Subcommittee tomorrow. We're very excited because we have a lot of great parental representatives. We have a state trooper who's a parental representative, we have a representative who worked, director of operations for a school, and in that role was, for two years, spent time with students. We have someone from Safe Roots to School who's going to be attending as well, so we have some great representatives. We have Heather Montgomery, who's been here in the fall and has been very active on this issue, so we have some great representatives, and we're looking forward to, to that meeting tomorrow.
Introduce James. Milton High School Site Council.
So at this time, we would like to introduce Milton High School Principal James Jett and his school site council, who will be presenting their school improvement plan.
I hope everyone enjoyed a little bit of time off with family and friends. This evening, I'm joined by the site council. Oh, one of the students did show up, and I will apologize in advance, we may have a couple of other students show up. We do have a representative from each grade level that anticipates on being here, but with practices and athletic events, they may come in a little late, so I do apologize in advance if that does happen. Before we get started, I just want to make one correction there.
The Chris?
Chris Heron presentation next week is actually 6:30, and I would encourage people to get there as early as possible because it's going to be first come, first seated. We do anticipate a large audience, and we hope that we get a large audience because we think the message is very powerful. And the Chris Heron presentation is conjunct, in conjunction with Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital, Milton. They've been one of our biggest sponsors. They made a financial contribution to having Chris Heron come to the town of Milton, and so we're very excited about that partnership. So that, again, will be 6:30 Thursday, the 15th, in the Chelsea Winchester Auditorium here at the high school. Before we get started, we would like to go and talk, our site council is a very large group. We meet every second Thursday of the month at 7 o'clock in the morning here at the high school in the principal's conference room. So before we get started, we have individuals introduce themselves and let you know what their role is in, on the site council.
Michelle Cruiser, vice principal.
My name's Ben Kelly, I'm a math teacher at the high school.
Greg Palua, high school math.
Mary Scott, I'm a parent.
Eva Chow, freshman representative.
Veronica Guerrero Masia, I'm a parent.
And Tracy Grandow, team chairperson, special education services at the high school.
And James Jett, principal. I also want to make sure that the public knows, and the email went out to the school committee members, and I thank you for your understanding. We do have a site council document that we will be issuing to each of the school committee members. We had some final edits that we're still working on and need to complete that, but you should have that within a week. There are SMART goals in it that talk about certain measurable goals that we have, you should have that, but it doesn't change the presentation for this evening, and feel free to ask any questions as we move through the presentation. So tonight's agenda, very quickly, we'll be, to go over the Milton High School's mission statement, Milton High School successes, goal setting, talking about initiatives that we feel as though work, proven with the data that we have, and goal setting, which is, which we have areas of focus, and also proposed school improvement plans, the one, two, and three of those steps, and beyond the data. And I think it's very important we talk about the information beyond the data, because there are a lot of successes that may not necessarily tie directly into the school improvement plan or necessarily the advancement initiatives, but we think that they're wonderful contributions to the overall culture and success of Milton High School. Milton High School's mission statement, I just want to read it to everyone, for the general public. The mission statement of Milton High School is to graduate students who are equipped to reach their potential and contribute to a global community by engaging them in a rigorous, enriching educational program that emphasizes respect, achievement, and citizenship.
Over the past year, we've had a number of successes, and so I'm going to talk about some data-driven goal, goal setting and celebrating what we've done. In the MCAS, we had many students, a high percentage receiving proficient or advanced, 96% of the students in ELA, 93% of the students in mathematics, and 94% of the students in science, technology, and engineering. In addition, we had very nice subgroup performance overall, with our low-income group scoring 100 PPI points, our African-American black subgroup earning extra credit points. We also had the high-need subgroup rising in their point, point values that they awarded. Also, there were no failures in the Grade 10 MCAS, and we were just very happy with all those successes last school year.
And before we go on to the next sheet, the 100 point is the highest number of points, credit points, extra credit points that you could get. The points are issued in increments of 25, so 25, 50, 75, 100, and we were able to score 100 in those subgroup areas.
In addition, we had a very high percentage of students earning qualifying scores on the AP exams. I'm not going to read all of these percentages out to you, but we had a lot of students in the various subjects. Overall, 83% of the students who took at least one AP exam did earn a qualifying score, which is a great statistics, statistic also. In addition, we still maintain our competitive SAT scores, and we had seen some increases in improvement in the black American, black African-American subgroups for our SAT. So when we look at...
Data.
When we look at data-driven goal setting, we want to figure out what has been working at Milton High School, and one of the things that we look at is identifying at-risk students and providing support programs for those students that are in need. One, one successful program that we've had running the last few years is the Freshman Seminar. And Freshman Seminar is a course that helps students transition into the high school. It is offered in the fall semester of the freshman year. And it helps them get acclimated, it, the teacher acts as an advocate for those students, and these students are identified by their grades coming out of the middle school, their MCAS scores, and by teacher recommendations. We first started Freshman Seminar in 1112, and you can see that on the chart. Before that, we did not have the course. In 1112, we had 63 students enrolled, we had six sections running, and you can see in year one, in year, from year one to year two, we did have a decrease in the percentage of students in that subgroup with a GPA less than 2.0. So students were doing better than they had in the past. When we, the numbers, when you look at that chart, when you look at '09 and '10, '09 to '10 and '10 to '11, that, those numbers come from students who would have been targeted to be in the Freshman Seminar course before we had the Freshman Seminar course. Now, if you look at year three, there's a big difference. There is, the data's going in the other direction, and we actually do have some reasons as to why that did happen. Last school year, due to lack of teacher availability, and I will say partially due to, to funding, we didn't have the sections available for teachers to teach a Freshman Seminar course, and we only offered two sections last school year. So if you go back to what I said before, in 1112, we had six sections, and it was down to two sections last year, and we could only man about 21 students, and those 21 students were really the, the most at-risk students. So that would explain why the average GP... So that would explain why the average GPA was lower that year. Now this year, we are back up to 45 students, but we are still only offering two sections. We wanted to get more students into the program again, but we still don't have the manpower to make the classes as small as they used to be.
So the next slide that you're looking at is our Bridge Program. The Bridge Program is a program that we offer during the summer. We call it the Bridge Summer, the Bridge Program because it's the summer between the end of the eighth grade and the beginning of the ninth grade. The goal is to provide some extra support in the area of math, English, and science with a little bit of technology, but they also have individuals that come in and speak, whether it's former students, whether it's faculty or staff or people from within the community or even outside of the community, with the hopes of motivating, inspiring, and providing the students with some remedial work, but more importantly, supports and guidance on how to be successful here at the high school. Now, when you look at this chart, we're looking at the Bridge Program. In grade 11 is our first cohort of students that we really started looking at the data. We took their grade eight MCAS score in various subjects in ELA, math, and science. And then we took their 10th grade, when they completed it in 10th grade, and we looked at their scores. As you can see, those students in the cohort in grade 11, they did much better as they matriculated through the grades and over the course of the year. ELA had increased from 241 to 248. In math, it increased from 228 to 245. And in science, it was from 224 to 244. Those are skill scores. And if you look at that, all of them are considered proficient. When you get a 248, that's considered, 248, 245, and 244 is proficient. And we look forward to having more data regarding the Bridge Program, but this is something that we really, I would say Amy Tom and the teachers from this past summer really worked hard making it a commitment, not only from the student, but also bringing the parents involved into the, into the program and having them sign a contract and giving them some guidance on what their roles and responsibilities are as far as the students participate in the Bridge Program. And then also, we like to follow these students throughout the year, looking at their progress reports, looking at their grades, and giving them extra help and support as needed. Next and continuing at, the early administration of the Biology Final. If you recall, last year, we sat before you and we talked a little bit about this. Our science teachers, under the guidance of Ed Mulvey and a couple of people, we decided to administer the Biology Final Exam a few weeks earlier than all the other exams with, because our Biology Exam for our freshmen is administered in early June. So we wanted to make sure that we caught areas of weakness earlier and if there was some last-minute fillers that we needed to provide, we did that for our students. As you can see, over the course of the years, we had an increase. Last year, 2014, it was a slight drop, down to 89%, but I will like to point out that last year was one of the years that we did not offer the MCAS support in science. We did not offer that, whereas two years ago, we were able to do that. So as you can see, we still have a high percentage of our students scoring very well. The next slide, although I hate to mention this, but I think it's important to know, when you look at the science scores across the Commonwealth, we do very well. We have very few students that are not making the mark. And some of the students that may not be making the mark have some significant cognitive challenges. We're not giving up on them. Those students are working hard. Those students are really making some progression. And one of the things, even though this is not an MCAS data presentation, one of the things that we like to focus on is not necessarily whether or not they're making proficient or advanced at this moment for some of our students. We're looking at making sure that they're making significant growth with the student growth percentile. So our data-driven focus areas, as we talked about, the advancement initiatives, providing necessary supports to provide curriculum, to improve curriculum and increase student achievement, closing the proficiency gap, the increase to proficiency in science for all students, and use common online assessment tools to analyze student growth and use data to provide appropriate support and also to guide our instruction. Okay, the first one we have, I'm just going to pull them all up, I apologize. The first one is closing the achievement gap. And the first one, the first item, Strategy 1.1, is we called it updating our at-risk student list. And I want to talk about it a little bit, but I'm have Ben Kelly, our math teacher and our site council member, talk a little bit about it because it was his efforts along with Amy Tom last year who really got this started. Ben, if you want to talk a little bit about it?
About 15 months ago at this point, along with some colleagues, we developed an at-risk student database based off of a number of different indicators for students. Included in that list were participants in our Bridge Program, participants in alternative education, and those students who are on an IEP or a 504 plan, along with some other indicators from teacher input who thought that these perhaps were students that we should take an extra moment to take a look out for. Paired with that data was a number of different supports that were already in place by the school. So what we did is we investigated, were these students involved with a team or a club? If so, who's their coach? Who's their advisor? Who could we go to to talk about this student as a person? How many classes was this student currently failing or receiving Ds, low Cs, by counting up the number of grades on their report cards? Was this a student that was already involved in more than two extracurricular activities that may have other adults in the building that they could go to? The point of this was, we felt that the whole faculty did not know who our students at risk were and by disseminating this information to the faculty and letting them know what supports we had in place already, we hope that it'll be an ongoing process that will benefit all those students and give the faculty an understanding of what's already in place for them. Our goal right now is to continually update that and this year, we'll start to put in that data based on term one report cards and then after our second term, hopefully dropping students off of that list and perhaps adding new ones onto it who've moved into the district or for some reason have had a life event that may have impacted their grades and their well-being at the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. And if I could add a piece to that, another piece to that is whether or not the student needed or is currently under the guidance of an adjustment counselor or any other supports that they would have. So again, this wasn't necessarily to target the students. It was necessarily, we put it in place to identify the students to make sure that none of our students were falling through the cracks. 1.2, we wanted to hire a reading specialist and there's been some talk about that. I'm going to give you a number, but I'm going to say that that number fluctuates because we have new students moving in. We have students moving out and we, having a reading specialist, maybe we could do some entry examinations or assessments to really find out where students are when they're coming in. Ideally, we would love to believe with the work that the state is doing across the Commonwealth, everyone's at the same level, doing the same thing, but we know that that's not necessarily the case. So having a reading specialist to provide some additional support for our students as soon as they come into the building. We worked very closely at the beginning of this year with Dr. Spald and her staff to identify and have some conversations with the instructors, the department heads, to identify students who would be having some difficulties or had difficulties at the end of the eighth grade year that may need some additional support coming up. So we're hoping that that will take place. And again, using the data from our support programs, as we alluded to, the freshman seminar, the Bridge Program, our academic support, our math, English, science, MCAS support classes, looking at that data and saying, continuously monitoring, saying, what we doing, what is it that we're doing and whether or not what we're doing is working effectively. So we continue to do that. And then work with students in the earlier grades. One notable activity that we're working on is the calculus project, which we presented to the school committee. It's identifying students as early as seventh grade who may have the academic potential and motivation with some guidance under the teachers. It's not a remedial program, but it's pre-teaching skills, giving them support. We currently have that undergoing, it's underway right now. Courtney Miller, who is really spearheading that, has just switched up this time of year. So now we're doing some of the tutoring sessions at the Pierce Middle School to make sure we increase the number of students that are actually making the tutoring sessions during the school year. So there's a summer program, but there's also tutorial services that the students are given throughout the academic year. The beginning part of this year, we had it up here at the high school and we weren't getting the numbers that we wanted. We were averaging it anywhere from eight to about 12 or 14 students, but we wanted to increase that and it depended on the day. So now Courtney Miller's work with Dr. Spald and we have a day or so down at the middle school where we provide some tutorial services as well. I also want to say, we had a teacher, one of our science teachers that just went down to the Collycott working with them on the science, in preparation for their science fair. So we're doing a number of things to try to reach out and have some vertical articulation about student success programs and hopefully inspiring students, number one, to stay in the Milton Public Schools and number two, have them looking forward to a nice high school experience. And then we talk about the increase of the technology integration. That is huge right now. The number of Chromebooks that we have that are funnel into the classroom, a small number of iPads. With the generosity of the Milton Foundation for Education and also the capital budget, we're able to secure some technological devices to put into the classrooms in the hands of our students to give them the experience on a day-to-day, but also in preparation for the work that we see coming down the pike with Park. And we know that that is an assessment that we need to attend to. Oh, I'm sorry. The last one is the increase to proficiency in our science. Again, we're trying to update our curriculum to reflect the new science, technology, and engineering frameworks. Amy Tom, our science department head, is working collaboratively with the middle school, but also doing a great job with our teachers here at the high school. Provide professional development for our teachers. Right now, they're doing biographs in all of the biology classes, which is an online computer simulation program where students really get, work on it. Increase the number of problem-solving and analytic and thinking in inquiry tasks and science courses. We want all of our students to be thinking critically and analytically. And increase the use of technology. As I just alluded to, we had a number of laptops that allowed us to have up-to-date information where you could download the programs. Unlike the Chromebooks, it was, the Chromebooks is really hard to download those programs on the Chromebook. So we needed the laptop. So we were up to date in terms of the technology that we're using to look at DNA, to look at different programs, to access, to access programs that help further the knowledge of our students. The development of a STEM course offering to further engage our students in science practices. Again, if you remember last year, our biotech class was only a half semester. This year, it will be full semester. So our students will be dealing with that. We had four of our teachers that completed the certification for the PTC. That's another science certification program. Last summer, all of our AP teachers in chemistry, physics, in chemistry, physics, and biology, they went to a training because the curriculum for the AP exam in the course has changed over the, over the year. So our teachers have been trained. So we feel as though they're equipped to, that'll lead our students. So we're feeling pretty positive and encouraged about our forward thinking and where we're going from now, from here. Sorry about that.
And our third goal is to use common online assessment tools to analyze student growth and use data to provide appropriate support for all students. So at this point, we are at Strategy 3.1, pretty much, researching, piloting, and choosing online assessment tools. The three leading tools are Edwin, Teaching and Learning, Academic Merit, and Galileo Assessment Technologies. We actually had a representative here today to work with the Humanities Department to take a look at some of the offerings that they have. So we have options out there for us to work in science, math, English, and history. And we're hoping to pilot some programs the second half of the school year. These programs are to help us identify areas of strengths and weaknesses for students. We would need to train teachers to effectively use the online sites and then implement these additional benchmark assessments, in addition to the common assessments they have already, paper, pencil, throughout the school year. And this will do nothing but improve the instruction that we can give our students and, you know, quickly check for their understanding and make, let the teachers make adjustments to the curriculum or to what they're going to teach in the next lesson. And we definitely want to use that data to both differentiate instruction and to, like I said, adjust, improve, and alter our curriculum when necessary.
So before we let other members of the site council, site council speak, we wanted to talk about a few highlights that we saw that was beyond, that we feel as though is important to outline beyond the data. Ironically, we had, we offered 18 advanced placement courses at the high school. Sorry. 18 advanced placement courses here at the high school. Ninety-one percent of Milton High School students took the SAT in 2013 and 14. We have an excellent graduation rate. We increased the number of COTAC classes with Tracy Grandow. We'll talk about the new AP curriculum in physics that offers a two-year AP physics program. We're really excited about it. So is in Tom Shaw. Teachers across multiple disciplines attended professional development. AP potential training, we just had that today with all faculty and staff as part of our early release. Heather Ayers, who works with us now, she, a former exec or representative of the college board, so she has the inside scoop. But the AP is identifying promising students and really working with them, encouraging them, and providing them the support at the early age. She spoke to the entire faculty and staff, what can we do? She showed us some research and data on the number of students who are recommended for AP and then broken down by ethnicity, how many actually take an AP course. So that was pretty alarming, so.
I just want to add to that. And it's by using the PSAT scores that we have. So we have the PSAT scores in grade 10 and 11 and we use those scores to figure out their AP potential, so.
And thank you. So again, I just want to remind everyone, we have an outstanding music, extracurricular activities and music program. We have wonderful athletics and sports. We encourage people to come out for all of them this year. Ironically, and it shows what we do in terms of listening to the community, we did our grade eight back-to-school night. That was in early September, October, and we had a parent that reached out to Ms. Cruzer saying, "You guys should really go down and get the kids to come up from the eighth grade and have a day up here at the high school." We did that where every single club, sport, activity had representative, student representative. If they had uniforms, they wore the uniforms. They had presentations, from computer presentations to sort of props, all types of stuff. And we had the entire eighth grade come up. And what was nice about that is we had a number of parents who called who said that they had, their children had interest in going to a private or public school and now have made the decision that they're going to attend Milton High School. So for students who were here this evening and may have participated in that and maybe one of our student representatives talked about that, it was a wonderful day. And I think that the students, and a lot of credit goes to Karen Kay, our guidance department, our teachers, our advisors, Michelle Cruiser, and our coaches and our athletic director. As we talked about, the Chris Heron presentation we have on the 15th, we did have a chemical health awareness night. And although we weren't too pleased with the turnout, we had about 103, 104 parents or guardians, I should say, adults in the auditorium. I want to say to the parents that are viewing this presentation this evening, and I say it to the school committee, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have a problem with doing it. We, the whole purpose of this presentation was to be proactive, to kind of inform parents those things to be mindful of because we do think that this is, that it is a concern and as a community, not just as Milton High School, but as a community, is something that we need to be aware of. So I wanted to say that and hopefully in the future, if we have this event, we hope that parents, more parents will come out. And finally, I want to talk about a homecoming dance that we had for the first time on November 21st. I sat before the site council about a couple of days before that homecoming. We thought we were going to cancel it. Before the deadline, we only had 28 students and there was an alert that went out through Naviance and a couple of other things saying if you don't show, we're going to cancel it because obviously there's a cost that's associated with it and we didn't have enough students. 28 students the day before, on the 13th, the deadline was the 14th. By then, we had 308 students show up. I have, I will be honest and I said it to the group, I was somewhat dreading it because I'm saying now we have a dance right here in the town. When it's over, they're never going to leave because it's so close walking distance. But I have to tell you, it was one of the best nights that I have ever attended in one of these events. Students got along, students entered, every student was breathalyzed. There was no complaints about it. Students were in there dancing, enjoying each other. And when it was over, no more than 10 minutes, it was over. The custodians came up to me and said, "Why are we here?" The bathrooms were spotless, the students cleaned up after themselves, and within 15 minutes. minutes, the fieldhouse was spotless. That's a testament to the students that we have in this community and it's a testament to the students that came out that evening. So if they're listening and we continue to give them a pat on the back because that was an amazing night. So I'm gonna turn it over to some of our site council members and they're gonna talk to you about their experience, whether it be on a site council, as a teacher, as a parent.
Well, I mean, as a teacher, you know, this is my 15th year teaching and just looking at some of the things that have been highlighted, I can tell you right now, the last time Chris Heron came here, I thought it was probably the best presentation I've ever witnessed for students. It was very powerful and I know the breakout sessions were excellent afterwards and the kids were great. Just looking at a few other things here, I mean, I can, to back up what James was saying, I talked to Ben about the, Ben actually did the homecoming dance and he said it was great and all the custodians said it was great as well. You know, the prom that these kids have and all the experiences that they get is great outside of school. And then academically, I think the, you know, the couple of things that I've really taken away from this year have been the, the implementation of the DDMs and I know that they are for, you know, that they're an evaluation piece, but I think if you continue to hone those and we continue to work on them, I think they're only gonna benefit the students. And I really think student achievement will increase based on where we were and where we want to get to. And it's a tool for us to use as well, to kind of self-evaluate ourselves and continue to make sure that we're refining our practices and we're doing everything we can to educate kids as best as we can. And that's, that's really all I have for right now.
Well, as a parent with two kids at Milton High, like they're, just got out of their jazz band class that they have from 5:30 to 7:30 and they hear on Tuesday and Friday mornings at 6:40 and there aren't a lot of things in my kids' lives that get them out of bed. And so it's, I really appreciate all the different things that are available at Milton High, robotics, the different kind of clubs, the different kinds of sports. I, I love that the teachers make it very available to kids to just try things, that you can just, you know, you can try woodworking, you can try building the sets for the play, you can, they have a very positive experience. And, and as a parent, I've called some of you on the school committee about different things that I've had concerns about and I've really appreciated the responsiveness. There are, you know, when I drop off my kids in the morning, I don't leave until they're in the building because what if the lock doesn't work? You know, I'm not gonna leave them outside when it's 17 degrees out and, you know, when I've talked to heads of departments, I've really appreciated that they've responded, that they've listened to the concerns that I've had as a parent. I enjoy being on site council, I like hearing what's going on and it's a very available things, thing for parents to get involved with, so I really appreciate that.
Um, as a student, I really appreciate all the opportunities you have, like she said, to try stuff out and see what we like and I think that's good. And for the homecoming, I think it went really well. A lot of my friends really enjoyed it. They would go to it again, I think, and yeah.
I have a, a child who's a junior this year and a couple of things, one of them, James wanted me to mention, she came into the high school sort of tentative in the sciences and the biology program was so strong and being able to take the final before she did the MCAS allowed her to go from, I think she was barely proficient in eighth grade in science, to advanced, she almost got a perfect score in the biology MCAS. So I think that's a testament to that, doing the final before the MCAS so that they could strengthen up those areas of difficulty. Another thing is I really enjoyed the presentation on the substance use and I hope in the future that when we do that, we discuss some of the places where some of these activities happen around town, because I've become rather alarmed about that as my child gets older. And the third is the activities. So my daughter's in chorus and she just tried out for the senior, is it called, you'd know, senior districts today and she has the ACT the same day and she said, "Mom, you have to let me find out if I get into the senior districts before I apply for the ACT." So that's how important the senior districts were to her.
As a teacher in the special education department, I know that we alluded to the co-taught classes and for those students who have individualized education programs and are eligible and the TMC is fit, we have expanded our offerings in terms of co-taughts, which are two teachers in one classroom and a special educator paired with a regular educator. We have, we started a year, a couple of years ago with just the science department and we've expanded to ninth and 10th grade English and ninth and 10th grade math and we've added extra sections of science as we see fit. Our department is continuously working with the middle school to come up with projections of what we need of the previous, of the next year. So we've expanded this and hopefully in years to come, we will expand this even more so that students really can learn the content, but have extra attention and extra help in the classroom so that they can achieve and I swore on the MCAS as well. We're also considering student and parent feedback to continuously improve this program. It is, has been expanded and we realize the need for the feedback and continuous improvement as well.
If I could add something on behalf of Morgan Connolly, who said he would be here and must have gotten tied up. I applaud his passion and his determination to make sure snack was implemented at the high school and so he was going to be here to talk about that, but snack has been implemented. Again, it's on non-block days at the beginning of the third period or in third period at the discretion of the teacher, depending on what activity they have on that day. And then on the block days, it would be during the advisory period, again, at the discretion of the teacher with the hopes and, but I will say this, snack is not in lieu of breakfast and we encourage all students to come to Milton High School to participate in our breakfast program. We have the breakfast cot down by the fieldhouse doors, we have the hot breakfast in the cafeteria, there's plenty of space and we hope that more and more students take advantage of that. And at this point in time, that concludes our presentation unless, of course, you have any questions.
So I would just like, thank you for that wonderful and very thorough presentation. Milton High School is, has been near and dear to my heart for a long time and as, as I served on the school site council for many years, but I, something that really struck me as you all spoke tonight was that I feel like the, what's, Milton High as it is, exists today really has surround care. You know, I mean, it's, it feels like there's something for everyone and you have many safety nets in place so that no one can fall through the cracks and so many watchful eyes and caring hands on, on our students and opportunities for them to participate and to grow and to learn. And so I, I think that that's a value that can't be underestimated and on behalf of the community, I want to say thank you.
I'd just like to say that I think the, bringing the eighth graders up is a great idea. I think a lot of people, community-wide, don't know how, what a great system we have and, you know, everything we have to offer and, I mean, I was stunned one of the first times I came into the building, especially while it's in session and that's one of the other things, sometimes you bring the parents in at night and they don't even get a feeling for what's happening during the day and the kids don't see that either. So I think it's just a really great idea. We really should show off all the things we do, you know, some of the, some of the ways that we've done that, you've done that the last few years, is bringing some of the musical program kids into the elementary schools. The kids talk about it, they go to the shows, things like that. They go to the, I know Mr. Rooney's doing a great job of bringing kids to the football games and the basketball games, volleyball games, all the events, but within the school day, it's a great thing to, you know, really see the teachers at their best and what they're doing, so thanks for continuing to do that. So I just have a couple of questions. The AP program, I know that any student can enroll in an AP class, which I think is wonderful, but the AP tests are, if you're enrolling in an AP class, are you required to take the AP test? Okay, so it's not a choice, you don't decide, "Well, I'm taking this class, but I, I don't know if I'm gonna do so well on the test, I don't want..." And what's the cost per student to take the AP test?
They just recently raised the cost to $91.
Okay, so it's $91. Is there, is there any kind of sliding scale for students that have trouble affording that or it?
The increase went from $89 to $91 in the state, any student that's low, free or reduced lunch, there's a, there's a reduced rate depending on what their, their status is. And then we also have a program in, in what's happened in the past, teams of needs have actually reached out and supported students if there was some sort of financial hardship. One of the things that we try to make sure that we communicate, no student should miss the test because of the finances associated with taking the test.
Okay, all right. And then a couple of other things. The, you talked a little bit about the freshman seminar and that we are kind of a little saft on that. What will we need to do, what would be the cost of bringing that back up to where we had it before?
It's hard to say because it depends on the number of students that get recommended each year. I will say this, first thing next week, the 14th, is make sure people come out and support the budget so they are well-informed.
Right.
But the second thing is, we continuously work with the middle school to find out what their current enrollment is, what the students are. And I think they do a wonderful job as we get closer to the tail end of the year, their transition programs for department heads, meeting with department heads, school nurse meets with the nurse, the guidance counselors. So it varies and it varies on the number of offerings that we have in terms of electives as well. So it varies each year.
So when do we know for the, for the following years? Because you know how our budget works, as you, as you know, it's a little tough, so how do we make sure that program's fully funded if we needed it?
Well, first and foremost, I hope there's no cuts moving forward. And second of all, at the minimum, keeping the staff that we have and at the most, maybe if we were to add maybe a .6 to 1.0 position. And that wasn't necessarily part of the advancement budget that we proposed, but that is something that we look for. And even if we fall short with the number of students in freshman seminar, there's an opportunity to offer some sort of elective that we could kind of support students in terms of their interests.
Okay. And the identifying at-risk students with the grade eight through grade 11 or grade 10 data, how are those students identified?
In terms of the bridge program you're talking about?
Yes, bridge program, yes.
So again, the bridge program is really the guidance staff, the teachers at the middle school, grade A teachers, the administration really saying either students that they had difficulty, whether it was motivation, but had the potential, whether it's lacking in certain skills or just not meeting success, with success in the area of English, math and science, but just giving them that support and helping them get themselves acclimated to the high school a little bit early and get some, they do the summer reading requirements during the summer. They get a, some sort of insight in the first part of the first month of the math curriculum, so they really get exposed to it. So each year, you can have a different crop, different type, different needs. But I would say, although they are identifying students at the middle school, we're doing that, we do that through our at-risk list. We also meet every two weeks. We call it a student support where we bring our guidance staff, our adjustment counselor, school nurse, the administrative team together, alternative ed teachers and we identify students because sometimes a student may not be identified at the time in which you're doing it, but something could happen in between that time and they may need some extra support and so people could be knocked in and knocked out.
Okay. I have to think I just have one other question then. You talked about your at-risk kind of database, which I think is really wonderful to look at all those different things that, and compile that information. One thing that you didn't mention, I'm sure it's part of it, but I just wanted to ask, do you look at largest number of absences?
Absolutely. Michelle Cruzer was just doing that today. And the email, did it go out already to the teachers or will it go out tomorrow? Email just went out to the teachers today. So yeah, I think I've said this before and I'm gonna say it and I say it with much respect to the families, but we have a number of students that we try to work with on occasion and coming late and some of those students are getting dropped off by parents.
Yeah.
And I always say in my presentations to parents at the beginning of the year, I said at the middle school, being punctual is not just a Milton High School expectation or skill, it's a life skill.
Right.
It's your job and if your boss is telling you, "You need to be on time and you continuously come in late, you are going to get fired."
Yeah.
So we work with students, it's getting tougher and tougher, particularly as you get, as students get a little older, but that is something that we monitor on the, on the regular.
Great, thank you.
Just one question. And as a preface, I'll just say that I'm also an alumnus of the site council and this presentation was a lot better than any of the ones that I remember being involved in. My question is on one of the strategies, James, and that is the, the reading specialist. And the question is, is there any way that we could think about that more of as a short-term need as opposed to a long-term need, given the, the funding that we're putting into early literacy in the earlier grades?
Very good question. Our hope is, and the goal with the advancement initiative, that every student is reading at grade level by grade three. That is the goal and we do recognize that. Unfortunately, there are a number of students that were able to get through that net and we still have to provide them with the supports. These are very crucial years at the high school. We want to make sure every student by the time they graduate have the opportunity, the opportunity if they want to go on to post-secondary education or some sort of profession outside of high school. And so that's something that we recognize. As I mentioned, we, and then we also have students, the transient population that moves in, that didn't have that backfield that we may have offered at the elementary level or the middle school level and we want to make sure that they're supported as well. So our hope is, yes, it is a short-term because we feel as though the work that they do at the elementary and middle school level will benefit us at the high school level and I say it does.